I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. We ask for a moment of silence for our former president, George Bush.
Thank you.
Graham Cassoun.
Here.
Tobin.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Massie.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
And we have a quorum. Okay, four minutes. Nothing this evening. Respondents? Nothing this evening. For the good of the city, anyone who would like to address the council, please step forward. You have four minutes.
Good evening, Mr. President, distinguished members of the council, Honorable Mayor. I am providing members of the common council, the summary of the capital improvements on which voters are voting on this already has been posted on the website, has been distributed, so that members of the common council and the mayor and our president can have copies of it. Also have included within it a list of the different concerts and dates coming up. As I was sharing with one of our distinguished members of the common council, I think it's always great to see our elected officials at our different functions. And I think it's inspiring for our children, our young people. I remember when I was growing up in Brooklyn, I would see our local congressman or state senator. So I hope that our members always bear that in mind for my graduations to upcoming events, because who knows, by your presence, of course, you might be inspiring future leaders to some they come up to the banner and fill different positions of leadership or public service. So again, we have the different concerts coming up. As you know, the elections today on the referendum, it doesn't involve an increase in tax levy, but major capital improvements for the different buildings for the district, particularly the library, cafeteria, at the high school, and roofs at other of our buildings, Monhegan and Maple Hill. And of course, if anybody has any questions or anything, they could always feel free to share them with me. And I will, if anything, I'll be glad to pass on the message to our superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Reports of department heads, economic development.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to thank everybody that was involved in the tree lighting ceremony. It was a great event, very successful, highly attended. We had approximately thirty-five participants in the parade, the biggest parade yet. And I just want to thank from the donors of the tree, the Folia family, and everybody that participated, all the departments that were involved, mayor, common council for your support, and the bid district. And it was just a great event. And tomorrow, we have the Hanukkah menorah lighting at 4:15 in the Runford Downtown Park. Members of Temple Sinai and the city and the mayor will be lighting tomorrow night. And along with that, there's going to be children from Monhegan, Maple, Monhegan School, Maple Hill Elementary. And they'll be there singing with their choir and such. So it should be a very well-attended event. And we continue our holiday celebration with Miracle on Thirty-Fourth Street this Saturday at the Paramount. And it's just been a wonderful season so far. Merchants throughout the city and downtown have been seeing folks shopping and attending events, and great decorations throughout the city. So Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, everyone. That's all I have for tonight.
Question for Maria. Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
EPW Commissioner.
Good evening, council president, council members, mayor. I'm just going to run through the projects that we have. To start off with the leaf pickup, we're continuing to pick up the leaves. So if you do have it, still put it outside, and we're just going to keep going around the city. We are doing the first ward right now. And whenever there is a bottleneck or some piles choking the streets, then we interrupt our routine and go pick up that area and then go back. So right now, we are in the first ward. And we continue to send the guys around to look for a bottleneck. If you see anything in there, piles in the street that are choking the roads, please give us a call at DPW. We'll be happy to dispatch the crew over there to pick it up. You will notice some changes at the recycling center. Some aldermen called me, Alderman Johnson, Alderman Kleiner. And what we've done with the mayor, in cooperation with the mayor, is we had to let go of our contractor who provided us with the roll-off dumpsters, because the cost of disposing of the recyclables, it's just climbing. And the county started to charge quite a bit of money for them. So we're trying to save money in here to try to stay within our budget. So we got rid of the dumpsters in there, but there is a big concrete bin over there where you can deposit your single-stream recycling. And then DPW is going to load it and take it out possibly to Beacon. And some of it is going to go to the county. So as far as the public is concerned, there is no change in accepting recycling by DPW at the Monhegan Recycling Center. We'll run through the different projects that we are having, the construction projects. The black dirt sewer, it's a big project, but it's winding down. The contractor is doing some bunch list items. And there is some change order for, we found that there is some deteriorated sewer pipe in Ashland Avenue that we have to connect it into our sewer. So we're working with EFC and the contractor and the mayor and the council to get some funding for that section of it. Otherwise, most of the project is completed. That's the black dirt sewer. Maple Avenue Park and Drainage, that project is also concluding. We're doing some final surface restoration over there. Like I reported to you last time, we're going to encounter some delays, because we are going to dredge that pond by taking about three feet of muck out of that pond in order for the fountain to function. And the Army Corps of Engineers approves only one method, which is a clamshell in order to dredge and lower the profile of the pond. And that is not readily available in the Northeast. And we found a contractor, finally, who could do it. And we're negotiating with him. Hopefully, we can use him as a subcontractor under the current general contractor for the project. So that is work in progress. Otherwise, the project is really completed, except for the surface restoration. West Main Drainage Project, I know Dr. Johnson, he called me about it. It's a very difficult project, and we almost lost the contractor. He almost walked off the job a couple of times, to be honest with you, because it's just, it's very difficult. The condition of the construction are very difficult. It's been raining and wet, and the stream is very, is running all the time, the Monhegan Brook. So now he's making some progress. You know, I appreciate his due diligence and perseverance and staying on the project to complete it. So that work is in progress. This is targeted for spring 2019 to be completed, spring 2019. I think, I don't believe I reported to you that the mayor has gotten another award for a grant for $750,000 for the screw pumps at the wastewater treatment plant. It's an emergency project that the common council and the mayor, they appropriated funding to do it, which is to replace six screw pumps. In the meantime, two of them broke down. So we had to do some emergency work over there. And we're waiting for a specialty pipe to arrive. The pumps have arrived, two pumps. And we're waiting for some specialty pipe to be shipped over to us, I mean, from Alabama to Texas to California, from all over the country. Bits and pieces are coming in here. So hopefully, we can put those, that piping together. It's fourteen-inch, it's unique sizing. And the fittings are not readily available. So we're trying to put that together ASAP. So hopefully, next week, we will have everything, and we will assemble those two pumps and put them together. And EPA, they're coming from Manhattan to audit our IPP program, which is Industrial Pretreatment Plan, which is basically, we monitor all the industrial users in the city of Middletown, issue permits for them, monitor their discharges into the wastewater collection system, and try to work with them and make sure they're not discharging any pollutant into our wastewater treatment plant. That will basically will be passed by or passed through the wastewater treatment plant, because we will not have the treatment for it. So the EPA, they implemented this program for us five years ago. Now, after the five years, they're coming on Thursday and Friday to audit our books on our implementation. So we'll keep you posted. With that, I will conclude. If you have any questions for me.
Question for Jacob.
You said one other question with the recycling. There's a structure on the left, it's a wooden structure with a screen in front of it and an opening. Is that supposed to be there? What is it for?
No, this is for the leaf pickup. It's another, another method that people use. We have a blower in there that will blow, suck the leaf basically into it, and a different method to use it. But our guys, they insist that the way they do it is the most efficient, basically, which is with loaders, front-end loaders. They just scoop huge piles, put them in dump trucks, and take them out, instead of blowing them into a small box. They think that's the most efficient way to go. So we're, we're continuing with that method.
Teachable moment. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jacob. Fire chief.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight, we have a resolution for a transfer within our budget. Looking for some support on that. Engine one, that was ordered almost a year ago now. Tentative completion on that is going to be February of next year. So it should be here within a couple of weeks after that. And then the guys will be training on it from there. We did have a, for unforeseen circumstances, we did have resignation in the chief's line. Our car four resigned. So we'll be working on that replacement. And I think that's all I have for tonight.
Any question for the chief? Al McLeiner.
Yeah, thank you. Chief, with the transfers, was there any insurance money that would help cover the expenses? I didn't see it, or I didn't, at the board estimate, I forgot to ask.
I spoke with the insurance adjuster, was there today, looking at the car. And I don't know the ins and outs of the insurance. I'm going to leave that up to the insurance agent.
It won't be here in time.
Yeah, okay.
The insurance money won't go back into the fire department line. It'll go back into the fund where we're, where we're taking it out of.
Okay.
General fund.
All right, thank you. And is everybody okay from that? Was anyone injured in that?
The assistant had a bruised shoulder from the seatbelt, but other than that, everyone was all right.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Police chief.
Good evening. Just two items this evening. First, a reminder about the overnight parking, which went into effect on November fifteenth. From 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m., there's no parking on the street. We did give out a substantial amount of warnings for the first several weeks, and now we are enforcing it. Just want to remind the residents that there is no parking on the streets overnight. And the other item I have is that last evening, we did cops and cookies for the second year in a row. It was a great turnout, great interaction between the children of the community and the police officers that attended it. I'd like to thank Parks and Rec for once again partnering with us to allow this to take place. I mean, it's just another one of the great activities that we've been trying to partner and collaborate with to make it a better place for the youth of our community. Other than that, I have nothing else unless you have questions.
Any question for the police chief? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Time to recreation.
Good evening. I have four business items today. But before I get to that, I kind of want to piggyback on what Chief Wachoo just said. I was at two county functions last week, both dealing with positive youth development. One was emerging leaders, where it was a work readiness, where IDA actually combined with the Youth Bureau to give kids throughout the county work readiness skills. I was able to participate in that and in that, in those workshops and be a presenter and a mock interviewer. And I was also at the youth summit, which was our youth speaking out on all of the programs we run and are funded throughout the county and what it is doing for them. So they're speaking to legislators. And it's very powerful, and it was right at Cool's. Both of those events, county officials came up to me and complimented what's happening here in Middletown with youth programming and what the police department is doing with our youth. I think we're a modeled city when it comes to that. I did let the chief know the great things that was said about them. And it comes from collaboration. What we're able to do with the bid, to do all these special programs and with community development, what we do in our police department, and what we do in the rec department, and our collaborations with the school, it's really showing. And I have to thank you guys for all the support, too. We're never told no. You give us the tools and the finances we need to make these programs run. So we need to keep doing this great work. And it's not going unnoticed at all. The entire county is seeing it. And I think that's a great thing for Middletown. You'll see, I got a few resolutions tonight. One is to move some money within our budget. We want to use BASS, which is used, our website, the city clerk uses it, to start online registration in the recreation department. So hopefully, by spring, we can give it a trial run. And then we'll be ready for the summer programs, make it much more convenient for our residents, and get us up with the times. That will also, we'll have access to them using credit and debit cards as well, which is a great thing. It'll, it'll raise our numbers. We're actually losing numbers in our programs, because registration isn't convenient enough for parents. You also see a donation to the dog park, the Knox Family Foundation. Resident Amy Knox Larson donated $5,000. As you know, we're going to be fixing the drainage issue that's up there, which will be coming out of city funds. But we are collaborating with the shade tree committee. We've got some nice trees that are going to be going in there. And with some of these funds, we'll be able to get a nice walkway in there. And also, take care of like the water fountain that's on the inside and make a lot of things better. If anybody has recommendations, let us know. I know a lot of you here use the dog park. So if you get feedback from, from the residents and yourselves, please share that with us so we can spend that money very wisely. You'll also see the geese police, there's a contract there. They have been very successful for us. It does cost a little bit of money. They've dropped their cost $50 a week. And the Dabbage Park expansion, they'll also cover at no additional cost to us. So that guy's been a pleasure to work with, and it's, it's working. It's, it's definitely keeping our parks cleaner. And last, you'll see the Orange County Youth Bureau Solutions Funding for 2019. The city has been approved for $53,000 towards youth programming. Five thousand of that is with our Middletown Police Department, the two Good-for-Drugs that Officer Beebe implements. And the rest of it is with the Recreation Department with our boxing, our summer feeding program, our teen center, and our summer Leadership Academy. And we thank the county for their constant support in helping us make things better for our kids. And that's all I have tonight.
Any question for Chris? Thank you, Chris. John?
Just to announce, the next and last council meeting of the year will be December eighteenth at 8:00 p.m. So after that, January first is our reorganization meeting. And it's always the first business day of the year, which falls on Wednesday, January second, at 7:00 p.m. That will be the reorganization meeting. And that meeting falls on the same night as the planning board, so that will be moved. And I'll update the website when it's time we get those final dates. That's all I have.
Any question for John? Thank you, John. Public hearings and grievances.
Tonight, we have two public hearings. First one is to amend Chapter 475, zoning Section 47531, trailer and boat storage, trailer camps. And I'll read the notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the city of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December fourth, 2018, on or as near 8:00 p.m. as possible, Common Council Chamber, second floor, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the proposed addition to Chapter 475 zoning subsection A, section 47531, trailer and boat storage, trailer camps. And in all persons wishing to be heard, will be given the opportunity to speak either for or against proposed code addition. The complete proposed addition to Chapter 475 and boat trailer storage, trailer camps was available in the common council clerk, 16 James Street, room 12, and also on the city website. This is by the order of the common council. This was published in the Times Herald Record on November twenty-sixth and November twenty-seventh, and also on the city website.
Okay, at this time, the public hearing is now open. Anyone from the public who would like to speak about the trailers and boat storage? Any member on the council? Motion to close? Al Massie, second to buy. Al Green, all in favor.
Hi.
The second public hearing was to amend Chapter 433, taxi cabs, to increase the medical transport taxi cab licenses from ten to fifteen. And I'll read the notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the city of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December fourth, on or as near 8:00 p.m. as possible, Common Council Chamber, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the taxi proposed amendment to Chapter 433, taxi cabs, to increase the medical transport taxi cab license from ten to fifteen. And in all persons wishing to be heard, will be given the opportunity to speak either for or against the proposed code amendment. And this is by the order of the common council. This was published also in the Times Herald Record on November twenty-sixth and November twenty-seventh, and on the city website.
Okay, public hearing is now open. Any member from the public would like to address the council.
Good evening, President Rodriguez, members of the common council, Mr. Mayor. I'm John Lewis. I'm representing Orange County Medicoach. We are probably the oldest medical transportation company in Middletown. At one time, we were the largest. Several years ago, when there was a change up in city government and everything, they came out with these medical medallions. They came out with ten of them. We immediately lost a lot of our business. We've always handled all the medical transportation with our 21 medallions. We still could if we had the business, but we've lost a tremendous amount. Several years ago, new companies wanted to start up, asked about the medallions. Mr. Mayor said, I have a bunch of them in the drawer. They've always been kicked back and abandoned. What they've, what they've been doing in the past, these companies will get a medical medallion, then they qualify with the county to do medical transportation, and then they forfeit it. Why should they carry the heavy expenses of the insurance? Many of the companies right now running the medical transportation do not have any licenses. Many of them don't even have the minimum insurance requirements that the city requires. And once again, a bunch of medallions were abandoned. But due to the work of Sergeant Welch, I thought it would be in our advantage to go ahead and reclaim a couple of the medical medallions. But it is so overwhelming out there with all the outside vendors. And it's taking from our business, because we had the vision to go and acquire medallions and build a company, just to give out a medical medallion for a couple hundred dollars. Couple of years ago, you auctioned off five medallions, and the city made $100,000 in about fifteen minutes. Here, you're going to make $1,500 or $1,700. We're going to lose more business. And then he'll end up, Mr. Mayor will end up more that get turned in. Oh, we're asking for some help. You have to remember, fifty medallions out there. We employ almost 150 people between the drivers and all the shifts and that. So we are a major entity here in the city. And we comply with everything. It's been brought to my attention that maybe they're afraid that the other company syndicate would acquire them and not do any medical transportation with them. I don't think that can happen, because they are a syndicate of 25 equal partners. And they're required to only have one medallion. That's their bylaws. They can't have more than one medallion each. And they cannot have more partners than the 25. So that's not a question that would even come into effect. So I would recommend that the city do away with the medical medallions. If you want to, come up with five more medallions, and you'll instantly have maybe another $100,000. Let these new people that want to come in go through the same thing that we went through. Meet the expenses, get the insurance, and put in an investment in the city. That's all I have to say. Thank you, everybody. Merry Christmas, everybody. So.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, the mayor, public officials. Good evening. I am Erica Smith, and I am here to represent Courtesy to Go Transportation. We are a new transportation company that started within the last year. And was not aware of the medallion. I'm not sure if there is a difference between the regular medallion and the medical medallion, because we are a medical, we do solely medical transport. And that's what we would like to acquire. Willing to go through the process and everything, we were told that we can drop off in Middletown, but we can't pick up Medicaid. When they give us calls, it's, it's a two-way, it's a round trip. So if we pick up, we have to drop off. We can select the area codes that we want to service, but the city of Middletown does not have a zip code by itself. So it would be very difficult for us to choose not to deliver in Middletown. We're willing to acquire the medallion and do whatever, whatever it takes. We're just asking if there could be a hold on, you know, the clampdown that's going on until, you know, this can be, this can be done, where we can acquire the medallion and whatever. We, we are registered. We have proper insurance and willing to do whatever it takes to get this medallion. Just asking if, you know, there can be a hold, because I started this business because I lost my job and I couldn't get a job. And my husband died four months after, I lost my job four months after my husband died, and I have no other income. So it's very important for me. And most of my business comes from the city of Middletown. So I'm just asking if there can be a hold until, you know, whatever is needed can be done to acquire this medallion. All right? It's basically.
Al Massie?
I'm confused by your statements. If we approve this, then there will be a notice in the paper that five more medallions, medical medallions
Okay.
will be available. So when you say you want us to put it off, I think you're
No, just until those five medallions are issued.
Well, we're the group that's going to vote for either we're going to increase it by five, or it's going to stay at 10. So I think what you're saying, either I'm confused or you're a little confused in this issue.
Maybe I am.
If we approve it, you're going to be able to try to claim
Okay.
one of those five.
Okay.
If we don't approve it, then it's going to remain at 10, which doesn't help you, I don't think. Here's what happened, how it all came. And at some point, if Sergeant Welch can get up and speak to this, we were made aware of it, because a young lady came before us a couple of months ago, out of Port Jervis. She was picking up in Port Jervis, had the right, excuse me, had the right to do so, bringing down the Middletown, waited around, and then took them back. I think most people believed, well, it's a round trip, and it's acceptable. And that kind of made sense. But from what I understand, Medicare, Medicaid doesn't look at it that way. They look at it that it's one trip from Port Jervis or wherever else into Middletown. It's a completely different trip to take that patient back to Port Jervis. If you don't have the medical medallion in Middletown, from Middletown, you can't do that. And that's, I think, where this developed. So in order to facilitate, we came up, and we thought, well, maybe we will increase it from the 10 to the 15. I spoke to a couple of owners, because my concern was two things. One, is there a need for this? Because I don't want to take business away from people who are here already. So if there's a need, then I'm all in favor. If it's taking business away, then I would have some second thoughts. Now, the gentleman that came before you, I would have liked to ask some questions, too. So I think we're on the same page. I think you want to see this passed, so that then there would be a notice in the paper, and from that, you would be able to apply for. Now, whether you got it or not, that's a whole other story. The other thing is, with us having more medical medallions, it's, there's a lot of control. And once again, I think if Sergeant Welch gets up, she certainly knows it much, much better than I do. better than I do, and I spoke to her a few times, so I'm talking of what she's told me. She can elaborate on more. But there's a lot more control from the city's standpoint. We're much happier to have it that way.
Okay.
I also understand that some people have abused, they come in, drop off a patient, and the patient's going to be in the facility for hour, two hours, three hours, and then they decide to run around and try to pick up, which I understand is not legal. So it now becomes an enforcement issue. So I know what you're talking about, that you may not want more people, when I happen to be looking past you only to the gentleman, that he may not want five more out there because that's going to bring in more competition, you're going to be one of the competition. But I'm being told that there is a necessity for it.
There is. There absolutely is.
At some point, I'd like Sergeant Welch to get up because she knows it in and out much, much better than I do.
Yeah. There is the need. I can make the case, there is the need. I mean, there are a lot of customers that I talk to that sometimes have appointments, and nobody picks them up because they can't cover it. Medicaid will assign you a customer at the last moment because somebody can't cover the call, or no one was picked up. And when Medicaid assigns me a trip, it's a round trip. They don't tell me, okay, you know, I can pick up here and somebody. It's a round trip that they assign. So if I do the drop off, I'm expected to do the return to take them back home, you know? But there definitely is a need for those medallions. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, come on.
I'm sorry, you said you had questions?
Well, no. I gathered from you that there isn't a need. I don't want to mix up medallions and medical medallions. They're two separate, from what I understand. Now, you're in the business and I'm not, so if I'm wrong, just say, no, you're wrong, Mr. Massey. But a medical medallion allows you to do medical transports, a regular does not.
A regular medallion allows you to do medical and also pick up cash. The citizens going to shopping, going here and everywhere.
But then the medical only picks up medical. They can't do what I understand some of them do.
Correct, correct. And I guess several years ago, Chief Bethencourt had checked into it. We are the only municipality that has issued a medical medallion. No other town has it. They all honor whatever permits the regular transportation. As to what the young lady was saying, I would like to just mention, we've lost close to a million dollars in business due to these medical medallions now with all the other companies. And when she says these clients sometimes don't get picked up, that's not with our company. That's with all these companies that underbid and only have one or two cars or three cars or whatever, and they can't handle the business. In that sense, that's true. But if we didn't have the medical medallions, we would have all the business with our medallions. Because we, this is a business that we planned and mortgaged our homes to build. That was the whole purpose of it, doing the medical and the cash. And there's no conflict. You go in, you pick up, you drop off. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank everybody. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, council and council members. I believe that the current medical transports that we have right now are not enough to handle the amount of calls that are coming out of our municipality. That doesn't mean that Medi Coach does not have enough possibly to handle them, but after doing enforcement since September, we have done 17 arrests on illegal medical transports here in the City of Middletown. So Medicare assigning these transports to companies that do not have our medallions, that's part of the issue. That unfortunately is nothing that we can do about it. It is up to the transport companies to say, "I can't pick up in a certain area." It is also up to them, just like anything else, to know what our laws are here in the City of Middletown, along with our medical pickups, our taxi and cash medallions. So I know there is a need for more medical pickups just from doing the enforcement that we've done and seeing all the medallion, medical pickups that are happening in the City of Middletown that are not our, whether it's cash medallions or our medical medallions. They are outside agencies that we are getting, doing a majority of the pickups from a lot of locations that do medical services here in the city.
You have much more control if we go to the medical medallion, over the vehicle, over the driver?
Either medallion, whether you decide as a council to do another 10, let's say, cash medallions, make them up to 60 cash medallions, or we keep the 50 cash medallions and we add another five medical, making it 15 medical. Either way, as long as the city is issuing a medallion, we have control over that car. We see that car, myself and members of the department see it twice a year. Then in a registered New York State Inspection Auto Shop that we designate sees it two other times a year. So that car is being physically inspected four times a year. On top of that, their drivers, if they, we give them a Middletown license, we fingerprint their drivers, and we check their driver's record every year upon renewal of their applications, and we make sure that their license is still good. They don't have any arrests that potentially would affect their ability to drive or the safety of our residents here in Middletown. So we have control over the drivers, the cars, and the companies.
So it's a good protection for our residents?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Alden Johnson?
So this came out of legislative committee, and you were there for that conversation?
Correct.
Do you still feel comfortable for the council to move forward with this amendment with the language we have, or in your opinion, should it go back to committee and be reevaluated?
I do not see a problem with giving more medical medallions and seeing how it goes if you add the extra five medallion, medical medallions, and seeing how 15 medical medallions are going to work. I don't see a problem with that. It's always something that if we feel that it is not working for us, it's an issue, we always have the option to come back, reevaluate, and change it.
Okay. If I might, we have four of the committee members here. Does the committee feel we should go back to committee, or should we move forward with this resolution as it's been presented? Mr. Tobin?
I just have a quick question. The gentleman spoke about the, he felt it was negative to have the medical medallions. I think in the committee meeting, you talked about the positive aspects of having medical medallions. Could you speak to that, or?
For the medical...
Having that, you said other cities are looking at it as well?
Well, other cities are looking at just regulating their taxis in general. They do not have any regulations on their taxis. That's why an investigator from the state had contacted me, and we're trying to set up a meeting so that he can bring some of our city codes and our regulations to other municipalities to help regulate their taxis and their drivers.
I'm ready to move forward. I think competition would be good for the consumer. I think the better business, you know, the better service you provide for the consumer, you're going to get more calls. I think it'd be better for our residents if we had five more medallions. I'm ready to move forward.
Thank you. Alden and Green?
Yeah, I would agree. We can, oh no. Yeah, we can move forward. I'm comfortable with this.
Alden Massey? All right, the four of us out of the five, so I want to move forward. I turn it back to the chair.
Alden Kleiner?
Thank you. In this discussion previously, and I don't know who brought it up, but it had been discussed with the difference with the medical medallions in terms of the type of vehicle. And I know there was a concern that some of the regular taxis were not able to handle the special needs that some of the medical transports have. Has that been an issue, or is that an issue at all?
No, I believe we moved forward and we allowed SUVs and vans for the medallions. That's already been addressed prior to this issue coming up, yes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our motion to close the public hearing. Alden Massey, second to by. Alden Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is now closed. Mayor?
Nothing this evening.
Yes. Any question for the mayor? Okay, Parks Department, Alden Johnson, Francois?
Nothing this evening.
Alden Kleiner?
This is catching me by surprise.
He's up, Mr. Smith.
We have a constituents' meeting next Monday, December 10th, and that'll be here at 7:00 PM for the Second Ward. I had, actually, I was going to ask the mayor a question, but I'll bring it up just in general, that the story, you know, the story that, from Poughkeepsie, with the four people who died in that abandoned building and that fire.
Yes.
And, you know, that's the kind of thing we've tried so hard to avoid happening in Middletown. That's part of why the warming station began. And are we being careful about our abandoned buildings? Do we have a policy of checking them?
Sure, we do check properties on a regular basis, but the most important thing is for neighbors to call if they see a property occupied, if they see people going in and out of buildings. But we do have, we do on a regular basis check abandoned properties.
Okay, very good. Wanted to get that word out. Thank you.
You can also note that the police department just conducted their homeless survey also, which annually, or at least once a year, in conjunction with emergency housing or honor, that we go out and try to find homeless people and offer them services. So that's equally as important as to give alternatives to that type of living. But there is a group of people that will not accept services. So what you're saying is an important part of it, and neighborhood folks reaching out to us or calling police when they see activity in an abandoned house is probably the most important enforcement tool we have.
Okay, thank you. My favorite show of the year, art show of the year, was, is going on now at Orange Hall Gallery, and it'll also be going on in Newburgh. But I bring it up just because it's the annual Artist Response to Human Rights exhibit, and it's going on now till December 14th at Orange Hall Gallery, and it's also going on at Mindy Ross Gallery in Newburgh at Kaplan Hall. The Orange County Human Rights Commission, along with SUNY Orange and the Orange County Arts Council puts it on, and the work by the students, it's both literary and visual artwork, and the, some of the work is just stunning in terms of their understanding of human rights. And I just think it's a very important exhibit considering what's been going on in this country and around the world in the last two years in terms of human rights. And this year, actually, December 10th is the 70th anniversary of the United Nations Declaration. It was adopted by the General Assembly, the 30, the Declaration of 30 Human Rights, and it's the first time that that had ever been done. So it's a 70-year anniversary, and I have to say I was disappointed because in the past, we've had Eddie Diana there, we've had other people from the county there, and it's been an important event. We had no one from the county last year, I mean, other than the council people putting it on. We had no elected officials from the county this year, and I think it deserves more recognition than that, and I hope maybe someone can make it to the actual 10th anniversary, which is when the reception is going to be in Kaplan Hall in Newburgh on December 10th. So I would be disappointed if someone did not make it. It's just a really important issue right now. And finally, I also looked on the website, Orange County, to try and, that website is, boy, it's hard to navigate. But I looked to try and see what the agenda would be for this county's, this Thursday's county meeting, and it's just not there. And it's not going to be there maybe till tomorrow, and I think they need to do better than that. You know, we are a part of the county, and if we want to be involved, even if it's just a draft and a temporary agenda, there ought to be something there for us to see. So, thank you.
Oliver Caso?
Good evening. I just wanted to take a moment to thank the DPW department. The leaf cleanup has been really good, so whatever, they're telling you about their methods being better, it definitely is. They've been through our neighborhood, and the streets are spotless when they leave. On that note, I actually got a message earlier today from a constituent who wanted to express their gratitude to the department from top to bottom, from the woman who answered the phone, to the guys who came out. They had a family emergency, they missed putting the last of their leaves out on the curb Sunday night, and they called up and said, you know, "Did we miss it? Can we get them?" They said, "Just give us your address, put them out, and we'll come out." And sure enough, they came home today to perfectly clean front of their property, and they're just very grateful and thankful that everyone was just very accommodating, and they're thankful for the guys, and I just wanted to make sure that that was publicly said. So my thanks to you and the department, Jacob. They do a great job. Business-wise, the Neighborhood Watch will hold their final meeting of 2018 next Tuesday at 7:00 PM here in East Chambers. The Third Ward had their holiday ward meeting last week. We had a good time, and those notes went out. And just so that everyone is forewarned, there is no Third Ward meeting in December due to the holidays. So enjoy your holidays, constituents. Have a good night.
Alden Johnson?
Thank you. With respect to tree lighting, I agree with everything Maria said. With respect to Third Ward, I agree with everything Kate said. And I actually did have several inquiries in the last two weeks to DPW, now that we think about it, and I want to thank Jacob for his constant prompt and courteous responses. Thank you.
Alden Green?
Thank you. Yeah, I have to echo everything about the tree lighting. It only grows every year. It's awesome. Small Business Saturday, again, was something that I actually managed to take a part in with the family and invited some friends out, and they were amazed by, you know, the little hidden gems we have here in town, and things are only getting better. And I just want to echo that I hear that, no matter where I am. I was away, out of state, out of civilization, it seemed, for the weekend, and managed to find myself next to a couple from a neighboring township, and when they heard we were from Middletown, they had nothing but good things to say about what they're hearing. So, you know, it's always nice to hear that. So, you know, just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Alden Tobin?
I'd like to thank the Knox family for their generous donation to the dog park. Second, I'd like to commend Commissioner Tewill, the mayor, for aggressively pursuing the infrastructure grants and all the departments, I think, even the Rec Department. As a common council member and as a taxpayer, we really appreciate it. And the same for the Board of Ed, finding money for infrastructure repairs, like repairing the roofs and stuff. Those are great expenses, so, you know, as a taxpayer and a common council member, you know, it's greatly appreciated. Anytime we can save money for our constituents, that's a win-win. Thank you.
Alden Massey?
Nothing this evening.
New business.
Finished business?
Unfinished business.
Resolution to approve the City of Middletown 2019 annual budget.
Table it. Motion to table. Second to by Alden Johnson. Roll to table.
Graham Kasun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Massey to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $150 within the Mulberry House senior 2018 budget due to a shortfall in contractual services.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Massey, second by Alden Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Kasun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Kleiner to authorize the mayor to sign two contracts with the County of Orange to renew the 2016 Title III B Option Number Three with Orange County Office of the Agent to support senior transportation services and receive additional monies.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Kleiner, second by Alden John Francois. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Kasun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Johnson to authorize the treasurer to redistribute $33,000 from a recent application of two O and R rebate checks, which will be fund balance neutral.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Johnson, second by Alden Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Kasun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alvin Tobin to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with the County of Orange for stop DWI enforcement crackdown for 2018 and 2019 with a total award of $3,954.
Resolution sponsored by Alvin Tobin, seconded by Alvin Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoun.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alvin Tobin to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with tri-state geese police to control the geese population in Watts Memorial Park, Maple Hill Park and Fancher Davich Park, including park expansion in 2019.
Resolution sponsored by Alvin Tobin, seconded by Alvin Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoun.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alvin Tobin to accept a donation in the amount of $5,000 from the Knox Family Foundation for the Middletown Dog Park.
Resolution sponsored by Alvin Tobin, seconded by Alvin Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoun.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Go on to page two. Resolution sponsored by Alvin Tobin to authorize the treasurer to transfer $15,000 within the 2018 operation budget of the Middletown Recreation and Parks Department 2018 budget to purchase an online portal with credit card processing to allow online registration for enrollment into our programs.
Resolution sponsored by Alvin Tobin, seconded by Alvin Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoun.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alvin Tobin to authorize the mayor to sign an attached Humane Society of Middletown contract for 2019 with a $50 per dog increase from last year.
Resolution sponsored by Alvin Tobin, seconded by Alvin Massey. Any discussion? Alvin Johnson.
I just wanted to clarify, because due to my affiliation with the Humane Society, so when a dog is running at large, if it's claimed by the owner, the owner does have to recompensate the city for that fee, which I believe is going from $250 to $300. And if a dog's running at large and is a stray and is never actually claimed, then of course the taxpayers are, are paying to fund that contract. That's what I wanted to make clear. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll.
Graham Cassoun.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alvin Tobin to amend the Code of the City of Middletown, Chapter 161, Animal Section 160-1, Subsection 4, due to the increase of the Humane Society of, of Middletown 2019 contract.
Resolution sponsored by Alvin Tobin, seconded by Alvin Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoun.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alvin Johnson to determine that the application is in unlisted action under SECA for a two-lot subdivision for property located at 5 to 9 Lafayette Avenue, Middletown, New York, known as Middletown Tax Parcel Section 42, Block 2, Lot E.
Resolution sponsored by Alvin Johnson, seconded by Alvin Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoun.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alvin Johnson to approve the two-lot subdivision for property located at 5 to 9 Lafayette Avenue, Middletown, New York, known as Middletown Tax Parcel Section 42, Block 2, Lot E.
Resolution sponsored by Alvin Johnson, seconded by Alvin Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoun.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alvin Jean Francois to authorize the treasurer to accept a $250 donation from the classic 10K road race to help fund community outreach efforts planned